All right. Let's have a meeting. We have to call the order. Ms. Rogers, can you call us to order, please?
Roderick, present. Budzinski?
Here.
Garcia Guillen?
Present.
Lee?
Here.
Lozano?
Here.
Mahalik?
Present.
Morales?
Here.
O'Connell?
Here. All right, everybody who's here and who's here virtually, welcome. Jim, can we have the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. All right, Ms. Rogers, we'll get used to that. Do you have any public comments?
There are no public comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Business reports, 1.1.
No business reports this evening.
No business reports this evening. We have moment of silence. And it's a long list. Welton L. Travis, brother of Lynn Mackey, academic excellence and support. Benjamin Bearely, son of Benjamin, social and behavioral sciences. Barbara F. Warbach, mother of Ernie Warbach, information technology. Thomas Maher, employee, communications center. LaBelle Grupinski, grandmother of Tracy Morris, compliance officer. Gerald Pius, former JJC student, member of JJC Athletic Hall of Fame, Assistant Superintendent, Production, Principal of Lincoln Way Central. Russell D. Carter, father of Danielle Carter, Officer of Executive Vice President, Office of Executive Vice President. John Leach, longstanding member of the community. Rose Monzano, Juliet Junior College Foundation donor. Thank you very much.
Chairman, point of order, I think we did have one speaker that arrived a little bit late for public comment. If the chair would like to entertain that individual, they would like to speak at public comment. I know we've passed it, but they got here a few moments late.
All right.
Okay, I'm not certain if we can entertain them within the timeframe, but I'll turn to our attorney.
Probably not. I think we're making an accommodation for somebody who appeared at the meeting after the agenda item was called, which is the chairman's discretion and the board's, and the board generally does if somebody appears for public comment. Even if they get here late and don't fill out the proper form, they generally try to accommodate them, but I don't think it would be beyond the individuals present.
So this one, we're fine?
Yeah.
Okay. You'd like to come to the podium?
First of all, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Jimena Avila. I am a second year student at Juliet Junior College. And today I will kind of be speaking on the language access software. So I am a first generation student at Juliet Junior College. I'm here tonight previously.
For one second, I can't hear. And you're not anywhere near any of us. Is there any possibility that you can lower the mask so I can read your lips?
Or speak louder, closer to the microphone?
Yeah, I'd prefer not to, so I will be speaking into this.
Thank you.
So I will restart. My name is Jimena Avila. I am a second year student at Juliet Junior College. I am a first generation student. So I'm here today because one of my student, like, one of my other friends at JJC sent an email about the software address to the trustees in support of funding the language access software. For those that may not know about the proposal program, Kudo is part of tonight's meeting. This program would fund translation and interpretation services for people like my parents, thousands of other non-native English speakers in this district. Supporting this proposal today will directly impact students like me and my educational journey here. During my time as a student here, my parents have not been able to be part of education, mainly because they are not able to fully understand the English language, obviously, which I have had to translate in the past myself, since they couldn't understand. And this software would bring more access to them because this would kind of translate live for when there are board meetings like this. And then bigger meetings, so they are able to understand, able to accommodate more towards them. I would also like to bring up the fact that we did start a petition over the weekend, and this petition did get over 200 signatures. So this petition should have been emailed to every single trustee in here. And we would like to say that there are plenty of people who are also here virtually who are supporting. So if you guys are also able to turn on the comments for them to show their support towards this, that would be great as well. Supporting this tonight is a question of equity and inclusion. How much are students that look like me worth to the college and the Board of Trustees? Will you put a price on my parents' ability to access something so basic like the right of information of board meetings whenever they might choose to? I'm going to say something briefly in Spanish for our parents and those who are watching. And that is that I hope that they come here. Espero que ellos puedan sentirse más incluidos después de que llegue todo este programa, si es que ustedes lo dejan ser parte y le dan fondo a eso. To end, I want to let everyone know that the 260 students and community members at large signed the petition this weekend. And I came here tonight because I deeply do care, feeling represented. Like, you guys may see me, and I do speak English myself. So, but it's more important for the community. The community should be able to be included in every single aspect. They should know what is going on around them. So I'm here and with my next community and other communities of color which are watching tonight, and for a vote that could make history in our region. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Thank you.
All right. Recognition of any special guests? Any special guests, Ms. Rogers?
There are no special guests, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. 1.4 Selected Reports, 1.4.1 Proclamation Designation February as African-American History Month.
Okay, I'm pleased to announce this morning, we actually have two readers. The first is Crystal Morgan, a mother of three daughters and a full-time student at Juliet Junior College, who is currently the Vice President of the Black Student Union on campus and also serves as a program aide at the Boys and Girls Club of Juliet. She's pursuing her degree in health sciences with a minor in African and Black diaspora studies. She'll be finished with her Associate of Arts in the spring of 2022 and plans to transfer to DePaul University in the fall of 2022. Since she lost her 15-year-old daughter during the pandemic, she has hosted vaccination clinics in Will County, Cook County, and St. Louis County in an effort to bring access to vaccines to marginalize and low vaccination rates. She also serves as the precinct captain for DuPage Township Democrats in her community. First of all, I express my deepest condolences for the loss of your daughter. Second, our second student, Linda Miller. Linda is currently the president of Black Student Union and Collegiate Club Council. She graduated from Juliet West and continuing her education at JJC and pursuing her bachelor's degree in business and photography. She loves traveling and trying different foods and encourages others to achieve their goals and do what they love. But we have two readers, I'm not sure who is going first.
Our receiver's and then Crystal.
Okay.
So this is the proclamation of African-American History Month for 2022. Whereas the contributions of the citizens of the African-American ancestry to the history and culture of the United States are invaluable and abundant, and whereas these contributions deserve recognition, and whereas citizens of the African-American ancestry comprise a significant percentage of the residents of Illinois Community College District Number 252. And whereas it is the goal of Juliet Junior College to provide its students with a comprehensive curricular and co-curricular educational experience with consideration given to the contributions of all socially identifiable groups within American history and culture, now therefore be resolved, am I supposed to read this first?
Yes.
That the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Juliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Cankey Key, Livingston and Cook, State of Illinois hereby proclaims the month of February as African-American History Month in Illinois Community College District Number 525, adopted this 19th day of January 2022.
Thank you. Do we have a motion, please?
Some motion. Second.
All right, motion, second. Ms. Rogers?
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Roderick?
Aye.
Budzinski?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes. 1.4.2. Designation February as Career Technical Education Month.
I believe Dean Patty Zuccarello is joining us this evening, and she'll read tonight's proclamation. Dean Zuccarello? Okay, Dr. Gray, I'm not sure if she's on this evening, would you do the honors of reading?
I would be happy to, but I don't have the proclamation with me.
Okay, then how about?
I have it open.
Okay, thank you, trustee Lee.
Whereas February 28, 2022 has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education, and whereas career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for career readiness. Whereas the ever-increasing cooperative efforts of career and technical educators in partnership with businesses and industry stimulate the growth of our regional economy and nation by preparing graduates for high-wage in-demand careers. Whereas career and technical education at JJC affords individuals with opportunities to learn new skills across more than 50 programs. Now therefore be resolved that the Juliet Junior College Board of Trustees proclaims the month of February 2022 as Career and Technical Education Month in Illinois' Community College District 525, adopted this 19th day of January 2022.
Second.
Move of the second. Ms. Rogers, please.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Roderick?
Aye.
Budzinski?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes. 1.4.3 Resolution honoring Peter Nichols.
I'd like to invite Kristi Molti to the podium this evening, thank you, Kristi.
Good evening. Whereas Juliet Junior College would like to acknowledge and recognize Dr. Peter Nichols for his immense impact over decades of dedicated service and philanthropy. And whereas Dr. Nichols served on the JJC Foundation Board of Directors from November 1983 until his passing in 2021. And whereas Dr. Nichols participated in various capacities during his time on the Board of Directors, including President of the Foundation from 1987 to 1989, serviced on five committees, including the Awards for Excellence, Finance, Investment, Scholarship, and Nomination Committees. And whereas Dr. Nichols and his wife Amanda have two endowed scholarships at Juliet Junior College, the Paul V. Nichols Memorial Horticultural Scholarship, named after their late son Paul, and the Dr. Peter and Amanda Nichols Endowed Scholarship. And whereas Dr. Nichols received the Susan H. Wood Hall of Fame Award in 1995, which is given to individuals who have served JJC in an exceptional way. And whereas Dr. Nichols opened his dentistry practice in Juliet in 1952 and retired on his 70th birthday on August 28, 1993. And whereas throughout his professional, volunteer, and philanthropic life, Dr. Nichols' deep commitment to the college and to the community is evident through his years of service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Juliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Cankey Key, Livingston and Cook, State of Illinois, does hereby recognize and honor Dr. Peter Nichols for his commendable and impactful service to Juliet, Will County, and to our college, adopted this 19th day of January 2022.
So moved.
Second.
We have the roll, Ms. Rogers.
Roderick?
Aye.
Budzinski?
Yes.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes. All right, 1.4.4 Faculty Union Report, Dr. Marsink.
Thank you, Chairman O'Connell. Always appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board and community. I just have two things this evening, I'm looking to my left because I'm trying to see some notes, which I actually am not going to use. Two things I wanted to say this evening based on the two proclamations we had. First of all, proclamation declaring, designating February African-American History Month. I think particularly in this time, in this stressful time, and with all this going on, it's imperative for all of us to learn as much as we can about African-American history. Because there is no American history without African-American history. And at a time when there have been some spurious attacks on some legitimate history that we need to know and our children need to know, I'm hoping that this is just an opportunity for people to take a moment and say, yes, let's learn a little more, let's find out who we are, who we have been, and who we want to become. And so I just wanted to say that, first of all. And also designating this month, I just want to say something about our career and technical programs. They're excellent programs, and I'm not sure if everybody knows that while many of us who were teaching lecture classes were basically because we were trying to keep people off campus, so many of us taught online during the last two years. Our CTE people, many of them have been right on the front line, all the time. They've been there teaching labs, they've been there working with their students as closely as possible as they can, doing a lot of hands-on work. And so I want to just commend them on that. And I mean, everybody, it would be nice if we had more months to honor people, but I just wanted to say that too. So those are my comments for this evening, as always, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Marsink.
Thank you for your comments, Dr. Marsink. Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
No, you're welcome, Alicia, thank you.
Thank you again. 1.4.5 Adjunct Faculty Union Report is, I understand this disco will not be here, but she sends her regards and because she will not be attending tonight. 1.5.1 For Approval of Minutes for the Regular Monthly Meeting for December 8, 2021. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Rogers, please.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Roderick?
Did you call Roderick? Oh, aye, sorry.
Budzinski?
Yes.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes. All right. 1.6 Communications, Ms. Rogers.
There are no communications, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. 1.7 Approval of the Agenda.
One more.
Second.
We have the roll, please.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Roderick?
Aye.
Budzinski?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes. 1.8 Approval of the Consent Agenda is Presented.
I'd like to pull 4.2.5.
You need a second, second?
Second.
All right, we've got a second.
Give him a second.
Would you want to pull 4.2.5? 4.2.5, thank you.
And I'd like to pull 4.2.6.
A second.
We need a roll call on the rest of the consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Ms. Rogers, go ahead.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Roderick?
Aye.
Budzinski?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Jimmy, 4.2.5? I have a concern about 4.2.5. I was under the understanding that this was in support of the board.
We need a motion. You need a motion in a second?
Yeah, you can have a discussion, but there has to be a motion in a second, and then we get into discussion, so.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Sorry. I was under the understanding that the Kudo software was for board meetings. Based on the numbers we had received previous meetings, we did not, I did not feel we received information that warranted purchasing the software. I understand now with our guest speaker introduced that it's possibly going to be used somewhere else in the facility. If that's true, then I would like some more information before I vote on it. Because right now I'm looking at $23,750 for year one with a commitment of $50,000, including the second year. But we were initially looking at numbers that had 10 people, you know, a meeting watching it. You know, when you divide 25,000 by 10 people over the course of a year, that's extravagant when we have students that are financially struggling to get in here to take actual classes. So my feeling is the money would be better spent elsewhere than software that's going to be hardly used. Again, I, she introduced that as a possibility of being used somewhere else, and I would like to revisit that if that's the case. But even in the title here, it says we'll support monthly Board of Trustee meetings. I don't see it necessary to spend that money just for the board meeting.
So I'd like to just add, so Jim Sir had provided the board with a presentation at the last board meeting where that data and the numbers were shared, and at that time the direction was to move forward with the purchase of the Kudo software. Now, Jim, I don't know if you can add anything within that $24,000, that annual, is that solely for board meetings, or will we be allowed within that dollar threshold to add any other opportunities for students?
We configured it for the purposes of the board meeting use. We can use the software, we will be licensed to use the software college-wide. However, the caveat being that if we have to purchase additional interpretation hours, that would drive our costs up above the $23,750 that we have included in the board write-up for tonight.
Okay, so we would have to bring that, if we wanted to go beyond that 23.7, we would have to bring it back next month with a newly negotiated price to include the expansion outside, beyond the board meetings.
Yeah, and our intent was to evaluate the use of the software in year one and then make a decision based on that usage if we wanted to renew for a second year or more.
So with this vote today, are we committing to the second year?
No, it just says for an option, is also approval for the second year, but we do not, we have not exercised that right to move forward. It's just an opportunity to move to the second year if we deem appropriate. That's correct, right, Jim? We just have one year.
That is correct, one year. And we would evaluate the use during the year, and if we, you know, a lot could change this year, especially with COVID operations and the way we operate the board meeting, et cetera. There's a lot of uncertainty there, of course. So we really need to take this first year, understand the software, get it implemented, evaluate the use. You know, we could use some test cases outside of the board meeting to utilize Kudo and provide that service as well. But again, if we go beyond those interpretation hours that we've allocated, we will incur additional costs for that purpose.
Jim, what was the presentation of how many were on last time and how many went to the YouTube to watch it? As we've asked you to keep records for us?
I'd have to pull up my presentation from last month, but it was somewhere about what, about 10 or less. Yeah.
Under 10, correct, under 10?
Yep.
And that's only with, excuse, thank you for allowing me to speak, but that was only with us just in discussion. That's not even once we, if we decide to move forward, when we tell people, hey, this option is available, and I think that will draw more. In the beginning, of course, the numbers are always going to be minimal. I don't think we can expect like 100 people when people don't even know we have the option available. I know, I understand the finances are important, but I also, if maybe, Dr. Farmer, I know that we have an HSI grant. Can you tell us a little bit about the, the HSI is a Hispanic-serving institution, which JJC is now officially an HSI? Can you let us know a little bit about how much we have received from that grant, please?
Morales, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me today, but I am providing an update to the board at our board workshop. Now, for the HSI grant in this investment, I'm not 100% sure if we can utilize those funds for that, but I will definitely look at the grant guidelines and follow up with the board.
With that being said, with that being said, it does strike a note to me that, okay, if we still need more information, which I thought we were going to get more information on this topic, if we're going to have source. on this topic, if we're going to have sources of where the income would, or the money would come from for this, I think it might make it easier for those of us that are voting on this. I mean, because anytime we have to make a financial decision, it's hard because everyone's looking at what we vote on when we vote. And I'm concerned about where the source would come. Can we delay this till next month then, until we have that at the meeting?
We can delay, but just a reminder from the last meeting, you know, we had asked, that's what I reached out to the board and asked, you know, do I have approval to move forward with this at the next month's meeting? And at that time, you know, Jim had his presentation with the data, and there were no, there are no further questions. That's why it was brought up this evening, and unfortunately I didn't receive any questions prior to this evening's meeting. So, you know, Jim doesn't have that information with him, nor Dr. Farmer, so I know trustee Garcia.
Yes, please.
So definitely, thank you. Thank you to our student, Jimena, for sharing definitely some of the concerns. This is something that we have already talked about for a while, and it always comes down to the cost and the attendance. But again, we cannot expect community members to be able to participate if they don't know about it. So that's where we come in and trying to make sure that we're educating them, and again, it's an investment in terms of our education, trying to connect community members, parents, students, other community members to their resources. We had already talked about being used for the board meetings, but not limited. As we look at other options down the road, again, it doesn't mean that it has to be at the second, but definitely other options down the road. Again, not only limited to Spanish, it could be to other languages. And I believe that we don't have the data on the top languages, but we have Spanish and Polish, and of course, English, which is good. But again, if we're looking at the end of the day, we already know the funds are going to be coming from the restricted, restricted purposes funds. We already have it stated right there. And again, this is how an investment of $23,750, that is going to be something that other places are not doing. Again, we're the nation's first community college, we can do a lot of things that other colleges are not doing. And that's where we come in and making sure that we are providing community members all the information that they need in order to be involved in the community, their college, and being able to utilize the resources that are already there that they might not know of. So we have already talked about this, and I believe that we need to move forward and support this proposal.
I think, and this is going to be my backup on this one, I think that putting something on the table that is a cost factor, we should have all of our questions answered. And even though we said move forward and we're still asking questions, I think there's still more out there, and of all the ICCTA members, we are the only one that are pursuing anything like this. So I think in all good, you know, positioning of us, I think we should have all the questions answered before we're able to either approve it or pass on it. I mean, I think that this is some, when you spend money, I don't care how much it is, I think we are looked at as elected officials if we're voting wisely or not. And I, I understand where you're coming from, but I'm also looking at, have we done a survey to see how many people will come and get involved with this? I haven't seen anything of a survey, you know, to see that there's a population that wants to hear what's going on, and yet there's a cost factor. I think there's more work to be done, and that's where I stand on it. Even though I do concur with you, I just think that there's more that needs to be done before we can vote on it.
Dr. Mitchell, did you get any questions from the board?
We have our hands up. Is anybody looking at our hands that are raised?
Trustee Lozano and trustee Morales have their hands up.
Please.
Trustee Lozano?
I'll go, okay. Um, yeah, I am also in agreement. I think we should move forward with this. We've been talking about this for like a while already, and in terms of, you know, the, our institution, we, you know, we pride ourselves in DEI inclusivity, things like that. And this is something that, and like trustee Garcia said, this is an investment into our community. And I feel that we should just move forward with it at this point. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's very difficult to sometimes connect with the Hispanic community and things like that. And this is an opportunity to, again, get the parents involved. I, you know, I, as many of you know, I'm also Hispanic. I, again, I can speak both, but not, not everyone is fortunate to have parents who can speak English. So I think we should move forward with this. I'd also like to just thank our speaker, Jimena, for speaking up. So thank you for that. I'm your student trustee, by the way, David Lozano, at your service. And thank you for that. That takes a lot of courage to speak up. I remember one time I did it myself, so thank you again. And again, I think this is just something we just got to do, and since we are, you know, always leading in, leading community colleges and being the first to do everything, I think this is a really good step forward for us. So, yeah, that's just my thoughts. I'm down to move forward with it.
Trustee Morales and trustee Mahalik both have their hands up.
Thank you so much. Trustee Mahalik, go ahead.
No, go ahead. My, 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 my side on this is, this is a pilot program. Let's track it for a full year. Let's see how it goes. We can weigh the numbers after a year, and it's not, we're not locked into two to three years. One year, let's give it one year chance, track the numbers, see where it goes. If we get increased involvement in that particular tool, then let's stay with it. If we stay flat or we decrease, then I say, let's, let's move on and we'll, we'll drop it from our funding then. Move the funds for something else. But it has my full support, moving forward for this, at least for a full year, okay?
Dr. Mitchell, I have a, I have another comment before.
Jim, hold on one second. Trustee Morales?
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. Mitchell. Thank you, all of my colleague board members. I appreciate every single one of your thoughts and concerns. We do have a fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers. However, we also have a responsibility to be inclusive to all of our community and to create community. We are a community college. We, as we've mentioned earlier, we pride ourselves that, trustee Roderick, you go to all of the ACCT meetings and you see, and you validated how JJC is on the leading edge of DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. The survey that you refer to, we have it. It's about 10 people, okay? And this is with just talking about it. Once we get it up and running, that's going to grow, and we're going to continue to have data. But we need to start tracking data. I get it. When we talk about $23,000, that's a very small price to pay to be inclusive. We just voted on African-American History Month. I think we really are going to be inclusive. Part of inclusion is communication and making sure that other people, that parents, you know, are able to understand and continue to encourage. I can almost assure you that once we start tracking data, we're going to see a correlation with the enrollment numbers going up, because then parents are going to feel very much more included and supportive of their students coming to a junior college, a community college. We still have to work on our name. We're the only school with junior attached to it. So I think, you know, $23,000 is a, is a very small investment. We're getting ready to build a bridge down the pipeline, a bridge which is millions of dollars. You know, that's infrastructure, which we, we need. I get it. I personally would rather see a bridge money instead of being spent on a equipment for a medical, the, the sonography program or other programs. But I'm willing to allow and vote on us getting a bridge built to connect students from one building to another building. $23,000 for language access, I think, is a very small price to pay. And if we're really going to be the, on the leading edge for diversity, equity, and inclusion, I, I would ask all of you to please look deep in your heart and consider the time that we're experiencing right now in 2022. And with COVID, we want to reach more people. We really do. So I thank you in advance, and I will take a seat now. Thank you.
You said that there, you said that there were petition, a petition with 200 signatures. Do you have that with you?
I believe those were emailed, or emailed.
Yeah, 260 signatures.
260 signatures. So what, as, you know, the breakdown on, you know, $23,000 and 200 people watching is roughly 100, a little over $100 a person that we will be paying for that program if we were getting 200 people in attendance at a meeting. Now, at our board meetings in general, with our regular, you know, English speaking, we have 17 people in the meeting. The reality of getting 200 people to justify, I, I, I mean, I, $100 per person, you know, if you're going to look at it that way, or a little bit over. So I guess when you're talking about what is it going, when we're going to look at this in a year and we're going to decide whether or not we can justify the cost, what is it that we're willing to pay per person for them to watch a board meeting live? Because the difference between what we have now and what this would do is that this is, allows them to watch it live. So I mean, we do not have 200 people that attend our meetings on an everyday basis. So I'm just saying, how realistic is it to say that we would get? And what are the parameters of us saying yes to this for another year, being that it, you know, how many people in attendance are we saying need to be? I would like to just make a recommendation, and again, it's just something to consider as the board continues the conversation. But I believe Attorney Buck, we can modify the recommendation and just strike the last sentence where we're also seeking approval for that second year. And if we just strike that, then that would allow just for that one year to analyze that data and then come back, you know, with, you know, additional responses. And it's just an option. I was just thinking as I'm listening to all of you. But, you know, again, it's totally up to you, but that's something to consider.
I'd also like to strike the fact that it's for the board meetings only. I would rather, like she mentioned, get the people in the classroom with translation services to attend an in-person class than hope somebody comes to these meetings when they still have access to it in the Spanish language, just not live. And like Michelle just pointed out, we don't have a flood of people coming in to watch these meetings anyway. A lot of people go back and look at them online. So.
Now, and to fast forward through them and put them on super speed, because seriously, who has time to sit there and watch four-hour board meetings when you can put it on two times the thing and listen to it in two hours? Now, to her point, yes, now, and to your point, if this is going to be used, and it's inexpensive, but that would be more purposeful to me to utilize it in the classroom for Zoom as a live translation, you know, type of thing. I mean, but to justify it for board meetings, I just don't see us getting 200 people in the board meetings.
And if you look at the participants right now, and I went online because I can't scroll up on that. I'm only seeing 18 people, and the majority are people from us, from here. I'm concerned about the population, you know, how many, and I mean, even when you're looking at parents, normally the students run themselves. They don't have the parents involved. Will the parents really listen to it? I know I, as a parent, when my kids are in college, I didn't listen to the school board meetings. I didn't have an interest. It was the kids. What they knew, they proceeded to tell us. So I guess I'm looking at it from parents' involvement and the level it would be to the cost factor.
Yes, when she comes back in a year, and I hope she does, when we review our first-year performance, I want to be able to tell her, yes, it worked for the students in the classroom, not, no, we're not going to do it anymore because no one came to the board meetings. The board meetings are available in Spanish now. And to add $25,000 to make it live when we're missing out what her example was of teen meetings and classrooms and things like that, and I'm sorry, I saw your hand, I just, but.
You can finish and then.
But I, you know, I just, I just want to make sure that we strike the board meetings only and visit what we can do for the students who don't speak English, not the parents that don't speak English.
Well, we can't strike that. We would have to come back in February.
Right, yes. But like I said, if we remove the last sentence, if we could reword that, then, you know, then you have my whole support trying something that will bring kids into the classroom, which is what we're here for.
Parents will be the first ones to encourage. If you understand our culture, the Hispanic culture, the parents are, play a big part in sending the kids or convincing the kids to attend community college. We have to engage parents. I think we've heard from students, we heard from our student leader, our student trustee. And again, $23,000 is a very small price to pay for us being, if we're really going to be inclusive, I think this is where we're going to really show that we are an inclusive institution. And to be, to understand other cultures, you have to be sensitive to the needs of that community that you're serving. So that's just another comment I wanted to make. Thank you.
Please.
Oh, no, trustee Garcia has her hand up.
Okay, thank you. So definitely, I don't think using this in the classroom is an option at all. So this is mostly for other community, other college sponsor activities like financial aid office, financial aid meetings or anything like that, that would be available in various languages. So not really in the classroom necessarily. Going back to the parenting, the involvement of parents, again, that's crucial. Even though our students are 17, 18, if we're looking at students that come right after high school, even though they're 17 or 18, and then we have other students that come in at a later point, parents are still helping. So even, even though we have students that are 18, that are adults, their parents are helping them along the way. And again, if we're looking at first-generation college students, their parents are trying to help, not the same way that other parents are trying to, but they're trying. So what we're trying to do is make sure that we are giving them the tools, making it easier, having all that information in their native language, and not just Spanish, a few different languages available to make sure that as a, as a young adult is trying to get into college, looking at their options, they have the support of their parents because they're able to understand what is happening and go from there. Thank you.
And again, I agree with everything you just said, except that that's not what this says. We don't talk about financial aid or anything in here, and I agree with you. Those would be great services because a lot of times the parents are paying for that education, and the finances is always a family decision. So yes, I would wholly support that being used for financial aid information, curriculum information, things that will bring the people into the building to take classes. I'm just scared that limited to board meetings, I don't, in my mind, justify that kind of money when we're missing some opportunities that this software can provide for us. And that's why I solely believe that we should look at this again and just consider other things this can do for us. Instead of jumping in to a one-year commitment to try something when we're missing out some opportunities that'll do for us.
Jim, what, what are you proposing? What do you, what do you want to see out of this?
I want to see, I want to see a bullet list of things that this can do for us.
Yes, I mean, what, what do you want the, the administration to come back with next board meeting, just as, with a proposal for us? Just out of curiosity.
That we don't consider for board meetings only, that we look at other instances where we have videos online now for students.
So you're looking at expanding it?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, can we table this to the next board meeting, and we have the administration go out and expand it and see what we got? We can always have this option already made. And then the next board meeting, we can expand it and we can have the other option as well, so we have comparison.
And Jake, that's what I had initially asked for too, so that we could get more and have more background on it, because I think we do have more questions. When you're spending money, you do want to know what you're voting totally and what it can encumber more, if that be the case. And I'd love to see the signatures too.
Yeah, Alicia and Nancy, is that okay with you? If we have, we're, we're going to go forward in one way or another, but can we have the expanded option as well, as long as this option, so we can vote on both and have our, our choices?
I'd like, I'd like to ask, why were these questions not asked earlier? You guys all got the packet in advance. Why were these questions not asked? Because I feel like we just keep kicking the can down the line, and it, it doesn't look good, honestly. It doesn't look good. What, what, why weren't these questions asked?
Not kicking the can down the line is, I want to support, I was going to support this fully, but if they want to have the option, I'd like to have kind of more united front. If, if that's the case, let's do it. We're going to go forward with it, but let's, let's get the option of, of, of both options so we can see them and see what the additional cost would be for having in class. I think it would be a great opportunity for having students in class. I mean, those parents that you're talking about, they could take a class at JJC as well, so with this additional option.
And we have the attorney.
This is a technology that we're talking about. Whenever we talk about technology, it's not going to be cheap. It's not.
It's never cheap.
And we also, and we also talk about the fact of what is it, how many people are we looking to attend board meetings for it to be worth to pay $23,000 for board meetings specifically? Because that, to me, is important. I mean, we have 18 people in attendance right now. And to me, you break that down, I mean, that's thousands of dollars for 20 people to attend a board meeting, and I believe that the service, financial aid, other services, use this for other things in the college, I think would be better than, than for specifically to spend $23,000 on board meetings. So not just to say, come back and add to it, but let's. but let's maybe even rethink this as far as, okay, what services do we want translation for? And what is the cost for that going to be? Because I don't know that we'll ever get even 50 people to attend to knock it down, or 100 was knocking, you know, to knock it down to make it. How much is it worth it to pay for 10, 20, 50 people if we're paying? I mean, look at the numbers. Break it down. Are we ever going to get that attendance in a board meeting? This is important. If we can use this service for other purposes to, for parents who want to hear about financial aid but need that translated, things like that, that is more important to me to spend the money there versus on board meetings. Can we really take a look at and think about? And I'm sorry, you know, I'm not trying to push. I knew and I just was think, I didn't even think about it until these questions were really brought up. So now I'm thinking about it like, you know, well, wow, okay, there's a point there. Maybe, not to push it down the road, but let's almost rethink how we're going to use this and utilize this.
Farmer would like to make one.
Anytime we're doing, anytime we're making our board meetings where this is important, people, I'm saddened to hear my board members saying, who's going to listen to a board meeting? I used to listen to them before I came on, and you know what? And this is where important decisions are taking place. And I would encourage more people to listen to our board meetings. But if we don't even offer this service now, I feel like we're minimizing the importance of the decision-making that's taking place at this, in this platform.
How much, how many people would be worth it for you to show up?
One person at a time, please.
We have 10 right now. We have 10 right now. Once we get this up and running, I'm sure there's going to be more. But they, if you look at what we spend on other things, $23,000 is a drop in the bucket.
I know, that's been said. No, we've all, we've all talked about this. Dr. Farmer?
Well, actually, it's Jim, sir. It's my understanding he has some additional information he would like to share.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer, Dr. Mitchell, Trustee O'Connell. Just a couple of points of clarification. First of all, we would be using Kudo through an integration to Microsoft Teams, which is the technology that supports the board meeting for invited guests. And so through that integration to Kudo, today, we do not or would not have the ability to get data on the number of attendees through that integration. This technology for doing this is emerging rapidly in the marketplace. There are a variety of other companies that are developing this type of technology. New companies are emerging into this space as well. We've, we've looked at a few of those, but all of those today do not have the integration to Microsoft Teams, which we need to support the board meetings. So that's one point of clarity I wanted to make, because I know there's been a lot of conversation about looking at the data and evaluating the data and making decisions on data, which of course is always good to do. But today, the way that integration with Kudo works, we would not have the data on how many folks are attending the meeting and listening to the meeting through that live Spanish audio or other language translation. So I want to, I want to clarify that point upfront. The other thing, I do have some live data to share because we are not just using Microsoft. Microsoft Teams is used for the invited guests to the meeting or dial-in listeners to the meeting. We offer a live stream of this meeting, which there are currently nine people viewing the live English stream of this meeting. We offer a separate live stream for Spanish closed caption. And there are 13 viewers of the Spanish closed caption stream currently for the meeting. So I wanted to provide a little bit of data live on what we have tonight and also clarify that point on the integration with Kudo specifically for the purposes of the board meeting. And then, Dr. Mitchell, I do have the slide from last meeting. If there's an interest for me to share that and pull it, pull it back up.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank, yeah, Jim, if you could share that, that'd be great.
So if we look up at the top, the Microsoft Teams and Live Event Technology, that averages 15 or less. Tonight, live, there is nine. And then further down for the live translation and closed caption in Spanish, there's currently 13 viewers of that stream at tonight's meeting, but it has averaged less than 10 at the board meeting on a monthly basis.
And you said you will not be able to tell how many people attend?
Today, the way the integration works with Kudo and Microsoft Teams, we would not be able to get the number of attendees at the meeting that are, that are utilizing that Kudo integration.
And it is only for invited guests? Only, so it...
What is only for invited guests? The, the, the Kudo, we would, we would make available to the public.
Okay, you would.
So Jim, how would we monitor how successful this is for one year if you can't integrate Kudos into Microsoft Teams?
You know, we'd have to hope that that integration evolves and matures and gives us that ability in the not-so-distant future. Otherwise, myself, along with our great team, would have to look at other ways that we could provide that data. But tonight, based on what I know about that integration, we certainly can't make that promise until we get a little bit further down the road. And I do want to acknowledge that we have five people tonight from our media services team supporting this meeting. So I certainly want to take the opportunity to thank them for all their great work. They do a lot of the investigation, the research, the trial and error of these different software and technology platforms. Our monthly board meetings come off nearly flawlessly, and it's a result of the great work and effort on a monthly basis from that team. So I'd be remiss without not acknowledging them and thanking them for their great work. But tonight, on this meeting, we have five people from the media team supporting this meeting through the variety of technologies that we're already providing.
So what you've stated to us is that there is no way of keeping tabs for the full year as we've asked to see how the integration would be in doing it, correct?
Yeah, based on what we know at this minute, yes.
And as far as other, as far as other competitors, do we know of any other competitors out there that are further ahead than Kudos?
No. What, what we've found so far, we've looked at a few other companies that are emerging in the space, and they do not have the integration with Microsoft Teams, which is what we need to support the board meetings. I will say, relative to Kudo, if we use Kudo in a standalone use case, a standalone event, a standalone meeting, and we don't use it through a Microsoft Teams integration, we would be able to get the data for other events outside of the board meeting if we were just using Kudo in a standalone event or meeting or other activity.
Would there be an additional cost to do that?
There is, there's an additional cost for the interpretation services whenever we use it, yes. Because we have to schedule the interpreters. It's been mentioned a couple of times that Kudo can be used for multiple languages. That's of course true, but we have to schedule the interpreters for the specific language at every meeting. So if we need Spanish and Polish and Russian, as an example, then we have to have three interpreters scheduled to support that meeting. And there's a cost associated for each of those.
I think because this is so new, and this is technology again, that's why we are not able to, the data's not able to be tracked accordingly. I would like this board to consider where we stand as a college, what we are doing, being inclusive with DEI. And I would really like to have a unanimous vote on this. Like Trustee Mahalik mentioned earlier, he, you know, let's try it for a year. I, I really would like to see everyone's support on this. Thank you.
All right, that's what we've talked about, and we've mentioned supporting it for a year. Is, that's something that we're on board with doing.
I have a problem if we can't get tallies of numbers. You need, you need concrete information in order for us to see if it's working or not working.
Well, we don't have the numbers yet.
No, I'm saying if during the year we do not, and it seems like it's very sketchy that we cannot get that number, I'm concerned about that.
It breaks down to $2,000 a person right now for this cost at 10 people watching. At 13, it still breaks, I, I'm asking a question of my board members. How much are you willing to pay for this service per person? What is an acceptable cost to you per person? Because even at 50 people, it breaks down to $460 a person. So at, and I understand we're using the Restricted Purposes Fund. And I, Alicia, I'm, I would love for people to attend more board meetings. I really would. I invite people all the time. They never show up, you know? I mean, I really wish people cared more about what was going on in our school board meetings. Unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of interest. And my thing is, is with what you're saying about parent involvement, is that most of the parent involvement goes into financial aid and different services like that. You know, I mean, I really wish we had more of our community attending board meetings. Unfortunately, we only have 18 attending right now, nine, and he said 13. And for me, I'm looking at it, that is $2,000 a person without being able to track over time if more people are attending or not. I mean, are we okay with paying $2,000 a person for a board meeting?
Yes, because I'll tell you what, well, how much are we spending for a bridge? And if we're going to use your scenario, your comparison, we have to, we're, we're spending millions of dollars on a bridge. And if we're going to say, how many people are going to cross that bridge? You can't use that analogy. You can't compare it that way. If we have one person, to me, I'm willing to spend as much as a million dollars if we need to, to have this technology available and to truly be an inclusive college. I think we're going to see it. Why don't we track how enrollment? Let's track this to enrollment. How is enrollment going to change once we implement this? Is it really going to affect our enrollment? Because to say we're spending this much on one person is really not fair to measure it that way. I don't think that's a measurable way to look at it. Because if you do, look at all the buildings we have open. We're still paying heat to, 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 and all of the utilities, electricity, heat, technology. And a lot of kids are from, are learning from home. They're not even coming to our campus. So I would still, I would like your support, Trustee Lee and Trustee Bazinski and Maureen also. This is so new that, yes, data is not all there yet, but why don't we track it to enrollment and see what it does to our enrollment? Will you all please consider that? Thank you.
All right. Have we done this today?
Not yet, a little bit more.
All right.
Something that we have mentioned is the combining it, doing the board meetings. So I recommend that we approve this and support it, but also down the road, like, super soon, looking at adding additional investment for other things outside the board meetings as well, but approving it as it stands at this second.
This Restricted Purpose Fund, what all does that go to? What all is that able to...
It's the, you know, at the workshop, Jeff will have the three-year financial plan, but we have an extensive, you know, if you think about the finances of the institution, there's a large budget with multiple funds to support construction initiatives, operations, instructional, you know, restricted purposes. They all have their purpose and intent. So obviously, for this, you know, there, there is funding available. Where we have, you know, we have small projects, we have discretionary funds to run the operations of the institution. This is a request for the board, which is why we would use the Restricted Purposes because it's designated an earmark for, you know, those outside of your normal operations of the institution.
And what about the HSI fund?
That's over $4 million we get from HSI money.
Right, but if you recall, Dr. Farmer said she was unsure of that specific grant for these funds. So that's something that we have to look into.
I understand, but we use those funds for other college purposes, but that is an HSI, HSI grant.
So I was able to get additional information regarding the HSI grant. If you recall, we did send a report and shared a report with the board. We have earmarked specific projects and initiatives for the HSI grant. And also, the HSI grant will conclude in March, March of this year. So I wanted to share that update with the board.
Well, thank you for that update, but when did we get the grant and how much did we get? Can you update us on that, please, Dr. Farmer?
Oh, my goodness, there's so many grants. I wish I had that right on the top of my head, but I don't, but I can get that to you.
I believe it was $4 million is what we got, and it was over a four-year period of time.
That's not the HSI grant. I think you're referring to the CARES Act, the, the HERF grant.
Can somebody send you that data, please?
Oh, absolutely.
We'll look into that. I will look into that and make sure that you get what you're looking for.
All right, now, so now that we've talked about this, are we talking about tabling this till, until next month?
I believe Trustee Garcia made a recommendation. Chairman O'Connell?
We have, we have a recommendation and Mr...
This is a point of order. The motion on the floor is to approve it as presented. If it's going to be modified, the motion needs to be modified. The person who made the motion was Trustee Mahalik. So it would be Trustee Mahalik would be amending his motion, and that could be to table. That could be to prove it for one year. That could be to deny it, whatever the board wants to do. But the current motion on the table...
I'd like to second.
Wait a minute. Current motion on the table for the board is to approve it as presented, and there's a second. So that motion would need to be amended by Trustee Mahalik.
All right.
Personally, I would like to, I would like to amend it. I'd like to have the two proposals, the current proposal as it is and the secondary proposal. I'm not kicking the can down the curb. One of these are going to be passed, but I'd like to get amended. I'd like to see, can make some comparisons. So I'd like to amend the proposal where we're able to...
I think it's a motion to table, Trustee Mahalik, because I think what you're asking the administration to do is to provide an analysis of the, of the proposal as presented and the proposal as Trustee Bazinski was commenting on for additional services that would be provided under the program. So I think it's just a motion to table, because you either approve it or you table it at this point.
I have a motion, I have a motion to table then.
Second it.
So is that our first motion?
That, that's the motion on this proposition, Chairman.
All right.
That was the initial motion. I'm sorry.
Sorry for what?
That was not the initial motion. The initial motion, you talked him out of it. You talked him into tabling this, Attorney Buck.
I, with all due respect, I, I don't talk anybody into doing anything. I explained the political process and Robert's Rules of Orders for what he had to do if he wanted to do that. That's up to the trustees. That's not up to me.
Right. And you said he had the, he had the option to move forward as is or amend it?
Correct. And he chose to amend his motion.
And why is that? Because he made the first motion?
And, and he chose to amend his motion to table it. If that doesn't pass, then something else goes back to the board.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
The vote needs to be taken on the motion to table item 4.2.5.
Ms. Rogers?
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
No.
Raderick? Bazinski? Garcia-Guian?
No.
Lee? Luzano?
Abstain.
O'Connell?
No. No. All right. What, what, uh?
It's, the motion passed, so it's four to three. It's table till the next meeting, uh, for board consideration.
Okay, and, uh, so that's what we'll do.
Right.
Next.
4.2.6. 4.2.6, trustee Broderick asked to pull from the agenda. So we need to make a motion.
Make a motion before I discuss.
Motion.
Second.
Um, question I have, and I do know that we are short on nursing and everything, and I have seen how the hospitals are short. Um, the $36,000 that's gonna be invested in this, will this give more opportunities for the nurses to advance when they're not being able to get into the hospitals?
Yes, it's my understanding that, but I would like Dr. Gray's on this evening, and she can provide additional information.
Good, thank you, Dr. Gray, if you could.
Yes, you are right on track, trustee Broderick. Uh, with the pandemic, uh, we have lost some of our sites, and some of our hospitals are still allowing students to come, but not at the same capacity. So this will give them the opportunity to still proceed in their programs, um, to get their competencies. And we're also finding, just looking forward, that a number of the accrediting bodies are going to allow, are going to, in the direction of allowing more simulation to count for what we would have called in the past clinical time. So not only is it's gonna help now, but I definitely can see this being beneficial in the future.
Will this also give us an opportunity to expand our nursing programs, to increase our enrollment for it, since there is a high need for the nurses?
Well, with all of our healthcare programs, our limiting factor is always the clinical site. So, um, it probably would help, the students would, this will not take the place of a clinical site, but it will help with some of the hours, and it'll just help them be more prepared when they do get there. Um, and we definitely understand the shortage. Dr. Mitchell and I have met with Ruth Colby at Silver Cross several times in the last month and, and talked about different ways to help fill those positions. And she's even willing, in some of our other programs, to allow, um, our students to do clinicals there. Uh, not all the hospitals are so open, but we are definitely working toward that.
Are all of the hospitals that we're connected to all going to be okay with this then, that we're doing this?
Yes, this is something that you actually have to take permission from the Illinois Board of Nursing to allow more simulation, and they definitely understand the need because this is a problem across the country.
Okay, yeah, because I've seen, I know, like, I know Silver Cross has been on, whatever they call it, where they bypass. But I know when I was there, rooms were empty, but they said it was because of the nurse-to-patient ratio, that that's why they had to do that. So that's why I'm, I'm seeing whatever we can do to increase the population of nurses, that would be great. So thank you for that.
Sure.
I, I stand with trustee Broderick on that in that, um, we have a long waiting list, is my understanding, of students that are trying to get into the nursing program, and I'm hearing that it's because there are not enough facilities out there available to allow them to do clinicals. Are we trying independent, um, doctors' offices? Like, why do they all have to go to hospital? Can we partner with other, um, small, like, um, clinics, um, the Will County Health Department, to get our nurses, you know, um, access?
Well, our programmatic accreditor, which is called ASON, is very prescriptive on where nursing students can do their clinicals. But you do make a very good point, trustee Morales, that there are other avenues for some of our other healthcare programs, like medical assisting, so that they're not taking the spots in the hospitals um, to do their clinicals at, um, clinics, at urgent cares, and a lot of them are in the doctors' offices.
All right.
But any simulation that we can get is going to help. I mean, we have actually had fewer applicants this year than we've had in, in the last four years, I know for sure, that I've been here. Um, but we still do have more applicants than we have seats, so, and we know from talking with our clinical partners that they are in desperate need of nurses, respiratory therapists, um, CNAs, all of them, all of them. So any simulation that we can get helps them to be more prepared and just helps that limiting factor of the clinical sites to keep us from growing. I would love to see more growth in our MA program. And a lot of this simulation also can be used across programs. It can be used in nursing, it can be used in medical assisting. It can be, some of it can be used in CNA. Um, and so we plan to expand the use to as many programs as possible.
All right.
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Put on a number five. I need to have a-
We need a vote.
Motion.
Go ahead. Got a motion?
Lee?
Yeah.
Luzano?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes, for the $30,000, whatever dollars we're putting into this, because it's important to be inclusive for all of our students, absolutely, I will support this.
Broderick? Yes. Buzinski?
Yes.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
I'd like to mention something. I don't even know how many students are gonna be part of this, are gonna benefit from it, but the point is that our students will benefit from it, and their parents will also as well. So let's keep all of this in mind when we look at the dollars and how we're spending it. And I, uh, I'm very concerned about our previous vote, um, but I just needed to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All is not lost. Number five, student development, no action required. Number six, new business, presidential evaluation process.
Trustee Buzinski and I are on, uh, the committee to evaluate the president. And in December, I sent an email with an evaluation to, um, the board and to people from the president's cabinet. Uh, this was based on information that processes that were approved and had been shared with us at the ACCT conference. We also shared it with people that are, have, um, as a board, we see Dr. Mitchell, uh, once a month, if that. But people, we really need to hear from other, uh, people that work with her on a day-to-day basis. And so it was shared with just a handful of other people. We asked them to return it by a certain date. It was asked to be returned right before Christmas. Um, and then I was asked to, again, delay, hold off, because now we need to go over the process. So the process is, uh, send it to the board, the cabinet, um, and a few people, like, the people that I had asked also was, uh, Dr. Marsink, and, um, I forget the other lady's name, the other, um-
Lauren?
Yes, yes, her as well. Uh, they were asked to be a part of this. And then once everybody turned it back in to myself and trustee Buzinski, we were gonna sit down together, uh, pull it, pull all, all the data together, combine it, and then present it. So trustee Buzinski, do you wanna share anything?
We sit down together and go through the data.
What's the deadline that you need it back by?
My deadline passed. My deadline passed. It was December, so that trustee Buzinski and I could review it over the break. Um, here we are in January, so at this point, we'd like to schedule a new date. I wanna know what questions there were. Why was I even asked, um, I mean, that's a normal process. I really don't understand why I was asked to put a delay on it.
Well, there's been a lot of stuff going on, and, uh, everybody's, uh, everybody has to make those, those precautions, and they have to, uh, they have to make an evaluation. So, uh, uh, let's, uh, let's get together so, uh, we can get that done, shall we?
Well, I'd like to ask, if anybody has questions right now, this is the time to ask, so that later on, next month, I'm not being asked to kick the can down the line again. I wanted to, this is, we should not take this long to give our president a fair evaluation. And that's my goal here, and I think that's trustee Buzinski's goal, is to be fair, um, to, and, and we do not wanna see any surprises. Uh, I, Dr. Mitchell's done a great job, and she shouldn't have any surprises. So I wanna know right now, as one of the chairs on this committee with trustee Buzinski, if there are any questions from anyone, please ask now. We need transparency.
Well, it's all that everybody can answer by just being on their computer, correct? They can hit the, hit the, the number that they want of the digits that are on there, correct? From what I saw?
It's a, it's a survey. Yes, it's a survey. You fill it out and you turn it back in to myself and/or trustee Buzinski, and we are the only two. We'll combine, combine all the data. Yes.
And I guess, I guess my question is too, do you know if it's me or Jim or Nancy or Michelle? Do you know who it is when we submit it back to you then? Or is it anonymous?
It's the process.
You can keep it anonymous if you like, or you can disclose who you are.
How would you keep it anonymous if we are emailing it?
Come back anonymous, but when it gets printed, we're not gonna write what email address it came from.
You're not gonna say that?
No.
Okay. I think that's a concern that was out there, so just, so we clarify that.
Concern.
That, that's, that's the process.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so trustee Buzinski, do you have a deadline date now that you'd like to re-establish?
I call you tomorrow? I don't, I don't wanna give a date, because I wanna-
Well, what, Jim, why don't you guys look at the 24th, which is Monday? Give us the weekend to finish it. And that way, we expedite, because we had to wait for you guys to put it into motion two from September and October. So, yeah, if it's there and it's, if we can do it, let's get it done by the 24th. And to keep everybody aware, the 24th is what you want it back by.
You know, I'm not a part of the process, however, I think if you're gonna ask for the cabinet members and Bob and Laurel to participate, I think it's a shorter timeline for them in light of the fact that we just kicked off the spring semester and everything going on with, you know, CARES and getting our students on board and on campus, so I just ask that you take that into consideration.
I understand that, but I think if the board itself gets it in by the 24th, the board, and then if we're looking at the two, the adjunct and Dr. Marsink, those-
Cabinet.
Yeah, the cabinet, I mean, let's get it moving, and I agree with you, Alicia, it needs to be done.
Yes, I think, um, since the questions haven't changed, everything's the same. All we're doing is explaining the process. Um, I think if we, in fairness, like Dr. Mitchell said to everyone, now that they're back on campus, um, I'm even willing to, let's say, uh, if we can have it back by February the first, I think that's a fair, uh, timeline.
February first.
Is that okay? Are you okay with that? Yes, are you okay with that, trustee Buzinski?
So will you do a resend so that everybody knows what the date is, or some type of an email update?
Yes, I'll kind of send an email.
Great, thank you.
Are we okay with the first, trustee Buzinski?
David has a question.
David have a question?
Yeah, I did the paper version. I'm pretty sure I gave it to you, trustee Morales, and so do I have to redo it, or am I good?
No, you're good. I have it. Thank you.
You're good. All right.
Still on old and new business?
Old and new business, yeah.
Um, can I bring, how do I bring something up to policy if we want something to be looked at in policy? Do we do it in old and new business? Okay, I'm looking at 1.10.01 Officer of the Board duties. I think that needs to be re-looked at, and, um, I would ask in that area, since that gives us the opportunity to have more communication, um, when I'm looking at both the chair and the vice chair's position, um, so that everybody's in total communication. I think when we had, when, something that I'm looking for, so that the vice chair is prepared in case anything happens, as it did in October, um, that we're fully up to speed, that the vice chair is fully up to speed on what's going on between the president and the executive chair, I think we should include that there should be a meeting that includes the vice chair along with the president and the chair. Doesn't need to have a meeting, but this will bring the chair and the vice chair in total communication of knowing what's going on. So there's no surprises if anything happens. If there's needs, need for a backup, the vice chair is prepared for whatever could happen. And I'm saying that as all-inclusive to anybody who's vice chair. I think it works well when the vice chair is prepared and doesn't walk in blind to make sure there's communication open. So I'm recommending that to policy to-
What was the policy number?
It's 1.10.01. I think we just have to clear, and, and I would be willing to, you know, give my, some of my suggestions that would help and open up communication, and there, there's no need for a notice of, of meeting because it's only two. It'd be the vice chair and the chair, but it further allows more communication between all parties so that nobody's caught off guard.
1.101?
1.10.01.
It's not listed. It's the one that she's asking us to look at.
And so specifically, you would like this to be looked at, and you're asking for a meeting?
To define and add, to define and add. That's what I mean.
To define and add a meeting between-
Pardon me?
To define and add a meeting between the vice chair and the chair.
And this would happen, like, before the, the, the meetings where-
Do you want this monthly?
Monthly, correct.
Maureen, would you be willing to write out what exactly it is, how you'd like the language? And then, um, trustee Lee and myself, we could definitely take a look at that in our, um, reviewing of the policies.
I was gonna recommend that too, that I'd be willing to give, as I said, anything that they need. I would be willing to write it out and give it to them in email format or written format.
That's what we'll do then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, new business. And old business.
I would like to, if I can, Chair?
You can.
Okay. Um, I stated last meeting that I would like to start introducing the, um, policies on the first read, because coming up very shortly, we will only have a first and a second read. So briefly, uh, 7.101.01.00 Governance Administration establishes the responsibilities of the Board of Trustees. 7.201.35.00 Student Trustee Qualifications and Selections. I really don't think I have to explain that one. It's about the student trustee verification and selection, uh, qualification and selection. 7.303.02.04 Internal Student on F1 Visas, uh, basically states any foreign student issued an F1 visa will be charged the out-of-state tuition rate, and this is to, um, lower their cost for attendance to the college and make it easier for them to attend, for foreign students to attend. 7.403.04.01 Financial Aid, based, states we are committed to removing economic barriers to education by offering financial aid staff to discuss options to fund their college tuition. And 7.513.01.00 Purchasing states we are committed to a fair and equitable consideration for each bidder. If you'd like to look into each of those policies, I just wanted to start introducing them so that if anything sparks your interest, you can go ahead and read those before the second read.
All right. Then we've taken care of six, seven, eight. Down to nine, report. Go ahead.
On 8.2, under policy amendments. When we go down to two week, I'm sorry, to two meetings to approve a policy, if in the first reading we make a change to it and changes are made, can it come back to the board as a first read again?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we're not voting it on it the second time. Okay.
All right.
Yes, sir.
All right, number nine, reports. 9.1.
Kristy Mulvey.
Good evening again. The spring scholarship, um, awards have been placed on students' accounts. Several students qualified this semester for the Step Up Scholarship, which is a foundation-supported enrollment initiative to help students that can only afford to attend part-time, um, become a full-time student. Um, in the month of December, we received 28 gifts from first-time donors. So we always like to look at that and, um, and track those. Student emergency continues to be an important resource for our students. Between FY20 and FY21, we experienced a 225% increase in funds awarded to our students. Our year-end giving appeal was mailed out the week before Thanksgiving and by the week before Thanksgiving to the end of December, the foundation raised $601,460. Since July 1st, 2021, until December 31st, which is half of our current fiscal year, we've received $1.1 million in donations from alumni, friends, employees, and businesses.
Good job.
This morning at 7:30 was my first foundation board meeting of the year, and I'm so pleased to announce that we have two new board members. The first one is Mr. Brian Van Aker from Argon Laboratories. And the second is former retired Troy Superintendent, 30C Superintendent, uh, Mr. Larry Weers. Our annual JJC SOC campaign will begin, um, February 14th to the 18th. This year, the socks are tie-dyed and are available in my office. You can order them online or I can have them available at next week's meeting. And I look forward to the up and coming board workshop where I will give you, um, kind of a state of our fundraising efforts and successes. Unless you have any questions, that's the end of my report.
I just want to commend you guys on working with Dr. Mitchell on the president's scholarship that you did, that the, that Washington, whenever. I was totally blown away by all the gifts that you had brought in and gotten raised. I thought you did a phenomenal job in doing it. I was, I was led to come and put my money into Johnny and try and win something. I know I didn't, but I thought the, the prizes were great. There was a lot to look at. And I just want to say I commend you guys for helping the scholarship. And I think, you know, Judy was dressed in her Christmas apparel. She looked great. I thought it was well done, well taken care of. And the area of food was phenomenal. I thought you did a phenomenal job. So kudos to you guys. You guys do a lot for us, for the, you know, for the school. And it's great to have the foundation's support.
Well, um, thanks to Dr. Mitchell, that president's scholarship, which she financially supports too, it's a testament to her that all of the employees that, um, attend that event, bring the money, um, buy the tickets, and we raise over $4,000 for that. We've also raised, um, significant dollars to support it. And it is my, um, my goal and my department's goal to endow, um, the president's scholarship and name it the Dr. Judy Mitchell Scholarship by the time she retires in August. So, um, our appeal for the spring will be asking, um, donors to give to that scholarship. And as a reminder, that scholarship is for returning adult students. And, um, in the last several years, Dr. Mitchell's had a really, uh, great experience meeting those students personally. They've come and they have lunch or, or refreshments with her and they're able to talk to her and, and thank her personally. And I know that she's benefited from, um, those relationships. So, um, we continue to raise funds for that. And I'm hoping that by August, um, we have that all endowed.
It was really well done. And I, I applaud the employees for their participation too, because it stands out as how we are as a team together.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so kudos to both, you know?
Dr. Mitchell has a lot of support here.
Yeah.
And Christie and her team, they're rock stars. So I, I appreciate everything they do. They just do tremendous work in the community. So.
I was really impressed with all those baskets.
I know, everyone is. And then you're so discouraged. And even me drawing names, I'm like, oh, it's not mine. Oh, it's not mine. Cause there's some really great baskets.
I know. I was hoping to hear my name called on one of them, but it didn't happen. But hey, I, I like the fact that we contributed and it was a good cause.
Very, very fun.
Thank you.
I have a comment real quick. This isn't for Christie, but I need to sign off. I apologize if you can report me as exiting the meeting at 7:11 PM tonight, please. Thank you, everybody, for a great meeting. And thank you for all of the, uh, well-thought-out, you know, comments. And, um, if Trustee Lee would be willing to give the report on the policy committee, I would really appreciate that. Thank you all very much.
And I.
9.2.
You ready for me?
Okay, ICCTA report. All right, just to give you a little bit of a background, um, I had talked to our, uh, ICCTA Director Jim Reed, who also was in, uh, conversation with the ACCT. And currently today, they are looking at if ACCT will be canceling the February Legislative Summit because of all the stuff that's going on with COVID. They've had many schools in Illinois that have decided, and we were one of them, uh, to not be present there. Uh, and that was due to several things. One, the Democratic legislators decided that they would only meet virtually with us. Therefore, we could basically stay at home and virtually meet with them. Two, the only representative that we have that is on the Republican side is not running. Um, so the need for us to meet with that person would not be there. So, uh, Dr. Mitchell and I have discussed with Kelly Roder to meet locally with all of our legislators at a better timeframe so that we can personally meet with them instead of being virtual. Um, so at that point, we did rescind coming, going to it earlier. And now, um, according to Jim Reed from ICCTA, there are many schools, even though they did say they're going, they're now declining. And they're going to have account for me by Friday to let me know where it's at and what ACCT is doing. So it may all be virtual. So Joni and Kelly, just pay attention and let us know. I'll let you know if I hear anything too. But David, I wanted to make sure you were aware of what was going on too, so you understood that even though we wanted to go, there really isn't a need for us to spend the money to be virtual, sitting in a hotel room, listening to it. So this is better for us to meet them in person here in our territory too. Um, the next meeting coming up is March 11th and March 12th for the ICCTA. It's going to be in Peoria, Illinois. If anyone wants to attend, I will send the agenda. The agenda will be out in three weeks for us to know what's on the agenda. So if you're interested and you have any, you know, needs or wants or, or questions about it, please ask me because they are, the roundtables are the greatest things. But also the, um, three to four hours where they give talks or they give lessons, which they did, as I shared last time, um, to, for training for us. It's really great. And yeah, Peoria is a little bit of a drive, but remember it's only by Bloomington. It's not that far. And, um, I think that was about all, other than the schools, all locally are still talking because the main subject around the whole central territory area is what they're doing for the pandemic. And we haven't had a meeting since. And basically we're finding that where they're following basically the same steps that we are the first two weeks. But there are some that are going a little bit longer now because the rise in the virus is going up on the, what's it called? The?
IDPH?
Yeah.
Yeah. The website. I thought it was going down. We were watching.
Yeah, but it's, it's still been in, it's still been an incline of people getting it. And there's, as the doctors had, that are on our board explained it to us. Some people don't know if it's the flu or if it's the COVID. So they're all watching and making sure everybody does the COVID testing. And as we got shared too, today by both my work and from the ICCTA, that you can get the four free pass, four free tests if you sign up and get it to your mailing address. So with that, I don't have anything more, other than I'll keep you posted on what happens with the legislative summit. Thank you.
Thank you. 9.3 Student, excuse me, Student Report, Student Trustee Report. David.
Hello, my fellow trustees. Hope you're all doing well. Welcome back. Um, you know, as you all know, we just started the new semester. Things are looking bright. Um, I don't have much in terms of report this time. Um, there's just, there hasn't been much going on. We kind of just started. Um, I will say, you know, um, happy MLK Day, that which happened Monday. Um, there are, there was an event for MLK today. Um, kind of talking about the history that was presented by OSA. Um, so they did a slight presentation on that. And, um, yeah, OSA is also going to be doing Goose Chase. Um, that'll be January 18th to the January 20th. It's like a virtual kind of scavenger hunt that students can kind of join in on. Um, and you can win prizes if you're, if you make the top, I believe it's three. Yeah, then, uh, Welcome Week, which usually is held in person. Last semester was held in person. This one's going to be a virtual one. It's going to be, um, well, part of it was today and then tomorrow is going to be the second day, again, virtual. Uh, today, they had, um, like a, they called them the Human iPod. The name was John Rush. He was a guitar player slash singer. So you could request songs. You can get kind of a mini concert from him. Um, and tomorrow they're going to have caricatures. Um, so that's going to be fun. I'll probably go to, go to that one. But, um, yeah, and then, um, again, there's free meal kits this, um, this, uh, year's, or I should say this month's, um, this month's, uh, recipe is chicken vegetable and rice soup. Um, but yeah, besides that, mu- much has been going on. You know, we just got back. Uh, I just started my classes pretty much. Um, new year, new me, I guess. But, uh, I guess another thing to mention is my term is coming up. So the search for a new student trustee begins in February as stated by the policy, um, regarding that. So February, I'm on the hunt for my replacement, but I'm just not done. So don't get, so don't worry too much yet. I still have more to go, you know? So, uh, yeah, that's, that concludes my report. Um, are there any questions?
When do you serve through?
I, I, my last day is April 14th.
I need to talk to you about a little accordion lesson too, before you step down, because I need to surprise my daughter-in-law. So we'll talk after.
Oh, for sure. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, David. 9.4 Building and Ground Committee Report.
Well, the B and G report will be brief tonight. Um, we didn't vote on anything. We did, we did not vote on anything tonight. Uh, there are a couple of projects in design mode right now. Some project updates that we'll have though, the city center. Um, the, uh, light towers are in fabrication. Uh, so hopefully those will be here sooner rather than later. Um, the respiratory therapy project is done and we're just waiting on equipment to be, uh, purchased and installed. And the equipment's been delayed since the COVID. There's been lots of, uh, lots of time delays on a lot of equipment. So they're hoping to get that done sooner rather than later. Um, the campus police station is heavy in construction. Um, and, but it's ahead of schedule right, as of right now. And the bridge, uh, connecting JNU building is, uh, the design work has been finalized, but it's, we all know that's been tabled. Update on Workday. We're 14 payrolls in here today and there's been minimal, uh, problems with that. There's also, uh, we've also received 5,000 applications through Workday, which is a great sign. Uh, we will do face, um, let's see. Um, let's see, I got, let's see. Oh, Workday Planning, uh, February 15th, we go, uh, we're, oh, Workday Planning is going in effect February 15th. Go live. Sorry, couldn't read my handwriting. And that, uh, concludes my report for the B and G Committee.
Thanks, Jake. 9.6. Financial Report Committee.
I was.
9.5.
We missed 9.5. I have too many check marks. 9.5, please.
Every time I hear B and G Committee, all I can think of is biscuits and gravy. I'm sorry.
I, I wish it tasted that well, so.
I'm, I'm still getting used to that acronym. Um, okay, so I am going to, I could have done this with old business, but I am just going to go over the, uh, policies that will be up for third read next month. And I want to, uh, just to remind you of a few things. So Committees of the Board states committees are appointed by the chair and all committees are created by the board must comply with Opens Meeting Acts, are advisory only, and do not have any authority to act on behalf of the board. No major changes were done to that. 8.201.65.00 Policy Amendments. Upon approval of this policy in February, March, we will only have one read and the second read will be the approval of the policy. And remind everybody of that one more time. Uh, 8.305.01.00 Institutional Compliance is a new policy that states that the Office of DEI will oversee compliance at the college. Um, what is up tonight for approval for the third reading, we approved on the consent agenda for the third reading was the VESA Act, which we made no major changes to. I went over that last week, family medical leave. Um, we changed the eligibility requirements for benefits was lowered to 1,000 hours, um, over a 12-month period in order to qualify for benefits instead of 1,0250. And item 8.7 Policy 04.13.00 Computation of Credit was updated to stay current with the ICCB regulations. As far as what we talked about in the actual policy committee, we went over board travel and institutional procedure, request for public information, and inspection of college records and institutional procedure, and environmental health and safety that should be coming up for a first read in February. Um, we also discussed, um, the meetings of the board and related documents for Code of Behavior, Behavior and Model Standards. Um, we are currently going over that and that may be up in February. Um, it may be up in March, uh, depending on how that goes through the committee. And that is about all.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
When you have, and I'm looking, I'm just pulling out one of them, um, is vacancies in the office to interest you shall be filled in accordance with established procedures. Can there somehow be?
Which policy are you speaking of?
I meant 1.01.35.00. And I'm just looking at this for references, just because I want to know what established procedures means. So we, where, where do we look for established procedures?
So we are a policy committee, a policy creating board committee. Um, we do not deal with the actually implemented implementation of the policy that would be done by.
Procedures, correct.
Procedures.
Right, right administrative.
But if you're putting procedure in there, can you identify the procedure that we should be looking at? Because this leaves us in a big, open, not knowing what procedure are you referring to?
Procedure number?
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm looking at it. I wouldn't know what procedure to look at.
We can, but typically if you look with our policies and procedures, the procedures align with the, the correlation is the same numbering system as the policy. So if you look on a procedure, say if it's 01.35.00, the procedure would be 0.01. So the numbers, there's a correlation in the numbers. So they, so when we adopt a policy, the procedures will follow that. So it could be, if there are multiple procedures under a policy, it might be 0.01, 0.02, and then they're sequential in that order.
Should we have that listed though? I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I'm used to seeing policies and procedures that have had whatever it is addressed to. It gives me direction to know where it's.
Okay.
There's a question that I have.
So.
Dangerous part of.
Yes.
You change a procedure.
Yes.
You do not know how far back that is referenced to.
Right.
References over time get so far out of line that it becomes a full-time.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. Once you start getting to the numbering and then every time you have a change, you have to modify.
We could add where we list the procedures.
Well, but the, I mean, the procedures are all on the website, on the portal. They're all.
Yeah. So I mean, if we, the, I mean, the most I think, like, because of what Bozinski said, we don't want to get caught up. And we only review these every so often and we don't want to.
Well, I'm just asking because I'm, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there. So I understand where you're coming from and where you're coming from.
We can list it as far as we can say something as established procedures as found on the, you know, and we can list the Joliet Junior College website and the actual slash dash dash, maybe if you'd like.
With dated of. Would that get you into trouble?
Well, that's what I'm saying. If you get too far in the detail. So if, if you go to the JJC website or you go to the portal, you'll see the table of contents and you'll see the, the policies listed and then you break down. And then when you do, you do the same for the procedures in the breakdown, you're going to see the correlation with the numbers. So I'm, I'm just trying to think. And I was so glad you said that because that was, that's what I was going to comment. But, um, I'm trying to think if it would be. But I'm trying to think if it would be, you know, like, maybe somewhere in the Board book, we just update the Table of Contents, and we place it in the back of the book, like we have the acronym, so you can see, like, if you have one point, something, you know, if you see the Table of Contents, Policies, you'd see that for the procedures. I don't know. Let me think about it.
Think about it. I mean, I'm just asking, because it seems like it's so anonymous that there's, there could be so much involved, and yet I don't understand it. I mean, if I want to approve it, I understand it's a procedure, but what's the procedure?
Right, but if there's, I mean, there's typically one policy. There could be anywhere from one to five procedures, depending on how extensive it is.
Right. And I'm just looking at the ones that were presented for first read. That's why I just looked at that, and that's what I saw that stick out, that I didn't understand it. So, I thought I'd ask.
All right. Let's, you know what? We'll think about that, and then maybe we can talk about the next Policy Committee.
Thank you.
All right. All right. 9.6 Financial Committee Report. If any.
Well, the basic thing from the Finance Committee report was that we put out a new posting for a new auditing firm, and we approved the, we approved the posting that the faculty created or the administrator created. So, I think that's the main thing from the Finance Committee, unless there's anything else you'd like to add, Jim.
Did we have a lot that have applied for it?
It just went out.
It just went out, yes.
Yeah, nevermind.
All right. So, the policy, the Finance Committee was able to look at the RFP and offer any comments, if they had any. And then Jeff and his team, working with Janice and Roxanne, are working to send that out, so.
You know, which is funny, and I'm going to say this. I don't know if you guys know this. Have you guys looked on the Will County Treasurer's website on the tax bills? Do you know now, for each tax-loving body, it tells you who to contact at the place of where it's at? So, like for JJC, it's got Jeff Heap. I didn't, this is the first year Tim Brophy's done this, where it's showing the names of who you contact, of who the business managers are. So, I think you should let them be aware of that.
That is such a good information to know. Thanks, Maury.
Yeah, I found it out the hard way when I was looking for one of mine. And all of a sudden, I went and it said, oh, this is the person's name. I'm like, wow.
Jeff's on our meetings. He attends all of them. So, Jeff, note to yourself, your name is on the website.
It's on the website. It's on everybody's tax, it's on the tax bill. When you go to the actual tax bill and you pull it up, you can see their names on each of the tax-loving areas.
Good to know.
I thought it was an interesting fact.
Okay. 9.7.
Okay, so that's me. So, again, Happy New Year. Welcome back. You know, it was exciting. You know, we had a slow start to the, you know, to the new year. But it was exciting to see our students and, you know, our employees start returning this week. The parking lots were full, and, you know, just even the comments from faculty and staff is, they're excited to see the faces back, which is so critical. So, I want to thank the Board, as well of our students and our employees, for following our C4 guidelines. If you recall, I tightened up the restrictions when we came back on January 3rd, gave my new EVP the directive to mandate the negative testing. And she and the ERT Emergency Response Team have been doing a stellar job. And again, it's another way to keep our employees and our students here. They want to be here. So, to do that, everyone needs to wear their face mask, be compliant, and follow. So, thank you to our campus community. Some of the things that I've been doing, just to provide updates to the Board, is, and something that I've shared, is, you know, my outreach with the community. So, just before the holidays, I met with Dr. Cheryl Green, the President of Governor State University. She and I had a great conversation. I found out that one of her cousins plays on the Packers. So, she went right from here to here in my books. But we continued to talk about our transfer degrees and how we can support our students, our three-plus-one, two-plus-two initiative. So, great conversation. She and I look forward to connecting again very soon. I also met with Mayor Ogilvy from Frankfurt, my first meeting with him. We had a nice conversation, talking about the positive impact of JJC to the eastern portion of the district. He and I, again, you know, had some great conversations, connections, about, you know, what we're looking for in the future and what we can do to help him. Trustees Broderick, Morales, Dr. Farmer, Christie Malvi, and I attended the Lincoln Way Area Business Women's Holiday Fundraiser. The proceeds from that event were given out, they're given out in the form of scholarships to female students and graduating from high schools in the Lincoln Way area. So, it was a nice networking opportunity for all of us. So, Trustee Morales, thank you for that invitation. Or Trustee Broderick, so did I?
I'm not Morales.
Yeah, okay, okay, well.
They did raise $18,000.
Yeah. Oh, great, great, great. So, thank you very much. Trustees Broderick, Morales, and Dr. Jeff Bradford and I visited Lyon Electric site on December 20th, and that was a great opportunity. I know Trustee Morales and I drove the bus. It's the first time I've driven a bus. Yeah, she drove the bus. Dr. Bradford drove the truck. And it was a great networking opportunity to meet the leadership team from Lyon Electric, again, talking about the potential partnerships that we can have with Joliet Junior College and Lyon Electric. So, good conversation. We had the post on LinkedIn, all kinds of feedback, positive feedback. So, super excited again about our partnerships. I know you mentioned the holiday party in December. And again, you know, I attended Christie's meeting this morning with the Foundation. They are doing a phenomenal job, the Foundation Office, just the money that they continue to bring in just continues to amaze me. I love working with her. They just have fun all the time and everything that they do. So, super fun. And then Kelly Roder, Tanelli and I are preparing and finalizing my touring schedule for the spring semester, and we had a start, but obviously, the COVID setback kind of delayed a little bit of that. I am meeting with the new mayor of Romeoville. I believe it's next Tuesday morning. And so, those will continue. And then she and I are also preparing and finalizing the schedule for our trustees, those that expressed an interest. So, again, we've got the schedule of Board meetings. She and Carly did a great job identifying Board meetings, chamber events. And so, we have those names, so we'll work on that. She and I are just tweaking that, and then we'll get in touch with the trustees and make sure that you're aware of those dates. And then, oh, and then the other thing that I'm doing too, again, going back to Christie. So, in addition to my touring, so Christie's providing me with names of partners and donors, and then I'll meet with them each month. And so, the first four that she gave me for January, super excited. Somehow, I got to figure this out, though, because everyone wants breakfast and lunch. And like, you know, January is like, you know, you got to lose that weight. And so, I got to figure out what I'm going to eat when I go for all these places. But again, everyone is so excited about these meetings. And then she just gave me a list of about six or eight donors. And so, Kelly and I are going to work to set up the meetings with the donors. So, again, I'm telling you, I love, there is so much about this job. So, this next president, man, it's awesome. So, I'm just telling you. Just great partners, great community, tremendous support, rock star employees. I just can't say enough. So, I wish them the best of luck in the search. And then my last, but not least, just happy January birthdays to Chairman O'Connell and Trustees Morales. And that concludes my report.
You forgot Roder. It's her big birthday today.
Oh, yes, and Kelly Roder, who took off today for her birthday. Happy birthday to Kelly.
All I got to say is, you guys do a great job. You can see that there's a lot of teamwork between your cabinet and you. And in what you just reported, I'm glad we have the EVP so that you're out there doing the, you know, increased opportunities of meeting and networking.
I know. And you know what? Dr. Farmer and I, we've gotten along so well, you know, just our partnership. And it's funny, because she'll sit there and say, oh, my gosh, you know, and I'm like, yeah. And, but she's learning so much about, you know, new areas. And she's doing, again, a phenomenal job, leading the teams, Workday, the ERT, the CARES funding, working with her teams, and just, yeah, keep going, keep going. So, she's doing a phenomenal job. So, I'm very appreciative.
ICCTA people are watching what we're doing, because the EVP is a critical function that the other boards are now starting to see. So, I'm bringing that back again in March, the Roundtable. We're going to be talking about EVPs again. So, I think it's a commendable opportunity, but I think it's also recognized that we're giving you more opportunity out.
No, absolutely, absolutely. And I'm trying to be really nice, so I don't just stick her with anything I don't want to do. So, I am trying to do that. But yeah, so I am taking care of her. She's doing a great job. That concludes my report.
Okay. All right. 9.8 Chairman's Report. There is no Chairman's Report, because we're going to go right into 9.9 Closed Session. Under 2C1 and 2C2, after the closed session, we'll have a motion.
Second.
Ms. Rogers.
Broderick.
Aye.
Budzinski. Garcia-Gian. Lee. Lozano.
Yes.
Mahalik. He's there. Mahalik.
Yes, sorry, I was on mute.
O'Connell.
Yes.